Good afternoon, everybody. I'm gonna start with the pledge of allegiance. So I'll have a few things to do about myself again.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one under God indivisible with every degree and justice for all.
Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to the May 4th, 2023 Rockland County Commissioners Meeting. A little different, we typically do mornings, but today we're here at 2:30. So I will go through the attendance in the room. We have Chuck McRusson, we have Leila Matinga, we have Commissioner Godu, we have Commissioner Coyle, we have Julie Poitier, Jude Gates, Robin Burney, and woman myself. And Zoom, we have Jason Henry, either Sheriff, and Catherine Mann, we see Kathy Stacy, Pat Conway, and I do see, sort of see Jason. Yeah, I can see him now, you're kind of like a silhouette, but.
You gotta close the shade behind him.
Yeah. He likes us to theme with him.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. That's better. Okay, we're gonna do openings for Painting of Long-Term Care Facility Kitchen.
So.
Oh, no proposals, I'm sorry. Okay, so we're gonna move to consent agenda.
Um, so I moved to regarding the minutes, I moved to approve the April 27th, 2023 public and non-public meetings.
Motion's been made and seconded on the minutes. Is there any add, addition, subtraction, and need to comment on those minutes? If not, on the, on the motion, Commissioner Boy?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes, I vote yes. Could we back up just a little bit?
Sure.
What's up? Nobody wanted to bid on the, the painting?
No bids.
Okay.
Nobody showed up.
Even the people who bid before and?
Yes, Commissioner, we sent the new bid to both of those vendors and also a few others along with public purchase and on the website, and nobody submitted a bid. I will re submit, repost the bid. Once I get the information back later this week or next week, and we'll repost again, and I'll, we'll reach out to those other to see if they are interested in. I, I don't know if it's just because it's springtime, new paint, you know, maybe they have other priorities. Maybe they're overbooked, I'm not sure. But I will submit again to see if anyone's interested.
Okay, great, thank you.
Sorry about the. Thanks, Jason, for that update. So in our packet, so we have the recruitment by-weekly report that we usually get, and it's really great information. I love the fact that we get that now. Keeps us up to date. Is there any, does anyone want to discuss any of that?
I, I, I think that it's worthy of some discussion to, to maybe change some of the techniques that we're using for recruitment, and probably some of that is already in place, but uh, it doesn't seem that we're getting much from AB, which is probably the biggest expense. Uh, I know Allison had mentioned that there was going to be some effort to through a data vendor that I had suggested, but I don't know if that's in place yet or, but I'm thinking we might want to consider swapping some yeah, funds into something a little bit different.
Yeah, when Allison comes back, we'll, we should discuss that. I know that one of the points here that we had mentioned in the past were that we were going to basically review to see, you know, what, what we're spending our money, you know, are we getting the, the right one? Yes. So when, when she goes back, we'll, we'll take that up.
I know that, actually.
Yeah, I'm sure you do.
Okay, uh, so now we've got the five-four accounts payable list. I think it was in that packet, seeing that, see the breakout, so I'll take a motion.
I move to approve the remainder of the consent agenda, which includes an accounts payable list total of $3,407,710 and 38 cents.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
I vote yes. Motion number two.
I move to approve a additional accounts payable warrant uh, for the Department of Corrections with a check date of May 5th, 2023 for $43,266.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion on that one?
We discussed this, this has to do with their vehicle, and we're not gonna put it on the budget next year, so.
But they need the transfer proof.
They need the transfer tomorrow, and we're gonna get it done, so it can be on the line item transfer on the, at the third quarter meeting.
So on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes, I vote yes.
Thank you. Liaison updates, Commissioner Godu.
I don't have anything to report today.
Commissioner Coyle?
Um, let's see, so over at the jail, the population is at 141. There has been a COVID exposure, so they are in a five-day wait pattern with masking. I don't know if anybody's seen, there's some discussion within the New Hampshire Association of Counties regarding that um, Medicaid stress fit treatment, which is good, and hopefully, you know, this will be an opportunity that the county, the Association of Counties will rally together to have, for, to use of some of the state opioid deployment money for, uh, to pay for that treatment, so that'll be first and then working forward to that. Uh, over in long-term care, we have one positive staff member. This week, a um, the water, there was a lilac community in Rochester, a nursing home community, had a major water leak and had to relocate its residents, and the administrator reached out to Jason, and we took in three residents to our assisted living facility. They're paying us at the same rate, but it's a nice when we can work with other communities and help the residents. So we currently have three new residents over now, uh, for the time being, while they take care of their facilities. And we are in our survey window. Woo-hoo! So, um, that will be for the foreseeable future. We don't know if they're coming earlier, coming late. Last year, they were pretty late, um, but.
Let's hope they're late, so this one.
We'll see, maybe Jason, I think in the network of administrators, maybe you get some wind, get down the pipeline. And Chuck, uh, over in finance, this is obviously the, the busy season and lots of subcommittee meetings, which have all gone, as I understand, very well. Chuck, you're a real asset in terms of conveying information and educating the delegation, so we appreciate you for that. That concludes my report.
Great, thank you. You, I'm just gonna, I'll let you talk about her department. And she's really busy. I'm just gonna add that, so last week, I was the commissioner that attended the opioid, as, as everybody knows, the Subcommittee for the Opioid were alternating as commissioners to the meeting, and then we'll bring it back and share that information. So I, I had went the, uh, last, the previous week, and things are going well. I think we met maybe for a half hour. There was some discussion as to, you know, what we could possibly use the funds for in the future, but we did mention the MAP program, and, and by the way, Jason Henry, who typically leads this, the charge here, was on vacation. Probably having a Guinness up too, but, um, but we managed to get, we managed to get through, so that was good. And anyway, it's all, all is well. We're gonna continue to do the, um, the meetings on a weekly basis, and that's basically it for me.
Five-weekly, every two weeks.
Every two weeks, I'm sorry, yes, thank you. And that's it, so move on to per diem staff for Commissioner's office.
I move to approve the addition of a per diem staff member to the Commissioner's office for eight hours per week until the end of fiscal year 2023, utilizing the remaining funds and the office supplies, expense line, and travel expense line.
Second, motion's been made and seconded. Uh, any discussion? Uh, Commissioner Godu?
Only discussion that I have regarding that is that this is as far as I would like to go, and I'm gonna suggest that we table the the extension of that. But I'm in favor of this motion to get us out of
I will.
Unbury.
Yeah, I will speak a little bit. I, I reached out to Brenda Santos, who was, uh, who preceded Leila, and I, um, just to see what her, what her experience was. And what, um, she said, you know, especially in budgets, since she was, there were many times she, she was over 40 hours, but what is so, I think what is significantly different, and what was most significant, what she said, is she said, once COVID, when COVID started, that her workload went up significantly, her hours went up significantly, and that was a product of putting everything, making, putting everything online, um, which are still duties and tasks that Leila is now taking over. So some of the, the COVID impact has really increased the workload in the Commissioner's office, and there's a couple places where I cannot specifically identify tasks that weren't here preceding Leila and now are here. For instance, the public purchase, so all the RPs go in, they go out on public purpose, and the process of uploading and downloading is significant, like, it just a, you know, single upload of one RP is, you know, 15 plus minutes, not to mention the download from anything that comes back and um, sort of saving that to the, um, the part, the drive. And so I think when you take these things in isolation, you can really see how eight hours in a week can add up very quickly. Not, and it's not just public purchase. There's just taking our video and the waiting, sitting here while, you know, you have to wait for it to, um, download, right? The initial taking it, calling out of office, you know, routinely a half an hour based on our meetings, so um, I think, to your point, um, I think, you know, let's, you wanna take a slower approach, I presume, which is, let's see what happens, see where we go, and then reassess. Why, yeah, go ahead.
I, I, I understand what yours is today, and I'd like to look at more of what exactly is going on before we move forward. I don't know how we did public purchase previous to this, but, oh, it didn't even exist.
Yeah, so that's completely new.
So maybe not all these duties, I mean, there's a long list of things that we can do to evaluate what's going on. Maybe all of these duties don't belong in our office. Maybe they should be spread to some other places, or that's, that's the further discussion before we move forward, is what I'm.
Yeah, but in the interim, yes.
In the interim, you know, one person, one day a week for the rest of the year to help, you know? Yeah. Get out from under the vaporware is.
So let's take care of motion one first.
So, yeah.
Any more, yeah, any more?
The only other thing I'm going to add is just the influx, you know, what with ARPA has become a lot of opportunity and a lot more motions and, you know, efforts to acquire things, whether it's, you know, goods or services that we've used with ARPA funds. So I, I haven't done it, you know, I haven't actually analyzed the number, the data specifically from pre-COVID, pre-ARPA, post-ARPA, but I, anecdotally, just from what I've seen, since we've, you know, gotten those ARPA funds, we are getting a lot more, just every time we get a new, you know, we're, a new bid, you know, there's all the potential of active work that goes alongside that, and that is not something that is gonna go away in the next year, just as we, and it's just a conspiracy. I understand, we'll work on motion one today. It does, our tabling of two does not preclude the impact down the road, but I'm just, um, raising these ideas so that everybody can consider them going forward.
And then I'll just chime in on one. So I kinda did the breakdown, would be eight, it could hurt me if I'm wrong, it's eight weeks or eight hours a day, one day a week is the temporary position. Uh, does that sound right? So it looks like, um, that total would be $2,017.17, the breakdown, the, the number that's provided by the, the cost and rather than that's the figure that I got there. Does that sound right? Do you look at like maybe?
I thought, I think, um.
Did I get that right or wrong?
Leila provided a memo in our packet with the exact, I don't think that is the, I think it's slightly less based on, um.
Maybe I didn't add right?
I did.
$1,728 is total needed to transfer from office of fund is, uh.
Let me just run the number real quick. So eight weeks at eight hours a week, basically, right? 64.
Regardless, I think, I, for the math, I think that, um, for purpose of the motion, I mean, we're all in the ballpark, it's around $2,000. Um, so let's just, we can proceed with the motion, and then we had, though what's clear is that we have the money to transfer to cover it, and it's a great place to start.
I agree. Yeah, so, um, I mean, I think it is important to figure that number out, just to make sure we do have it in the budget. As if there was a miscalculation, but it looks like it, it's, it's, we have to transfer a little bit more, right?
Well, our travel line, I mean.
I mean, we have it, I, we have it, correct?
Yes.
But that number will be?
We have $2,400 remaining in our, um, our office supplies line, and we have $7,000 left in our travel line.
Right.
So there's, I, it's unequivocal that we have the, the means to cover it. The question is, you know, let's see how it plays out in terms of who is going to, who's gonna fill this role, their rate, and then also, you know, starting timeline.
Um, and then the only other thing I need to add is, Leila had given us, um, her, um,
Job description?
The job description, and then highlighted some areas where we could delegate to this talent. So, um, and I, I am only mentioning that because I believe that we would have to make a decision as to, you know, is it all inclusive of everything she highlighted, or is it just part of it? Or we just have to figure out what's gonna be needed, because
There's certainly different priorities. Right, I, I would leave it, I think Leila is, can, can make a decision about sort of the tasks, but, you know, because it could be, there could be some change based on week to week, but the way she, you know, she's so ably is constantly assisting us in all the ways we need help, I feel like the management of the, those extra hours would be a normal shift.
I'm good with just voting on this motion for the moment, and then we have plenty more discussion as to why we're here and how we can, you know, what we should do to remedy it from not happening again, but we don't need to decide that for this motion right now.
Well, I have the floor right now, but I, I can appreciate the comments back and forth. I just wanna make sure that I'm finished with what I've been saying, but, um, but, all right, I think I am finished then, and so, um, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Mr. Coyle?
Yes.
I will, yes. All right, now, motion number two?
Um, so I think at this point, we will, I, I'd like to bring this back up, because I am in support of this, but for the most, for the purposes of now, I move to table the, uh, approval of the addition of a per diem staff, uh, for, uh, to the Commissioner's office, effective the first period of fiscal year 2024, for up to eight hours per week or under category, the ARPA funds category 6.1.
Yeah, so I'll second the motion to table.
So motion to table, it's non-debatable. So on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yeah.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Okay, uh, we are on lean release?
Yes. So I move to table this discussion, or to move this discussion to non-public session pursuant to RSA 91 and 82 regarding reputation.
Second, motion is to move this into non-public, we'll get to that point in the agenda, so all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, we're on to human resources, exception request, seven, really, long-term care services.
And move to approve an exception request to personnel policy 7-3, new hire rate for a long-term care employee, FC, as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? It's not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I will, yes. Proposed updated per diem wage schedule.
And move to approve the proposed updated per diem wage schedule effective May 7th, 2023, as recommended by the Senior Director of Human Resources.
Second, motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? On the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I vote yes. Excuse me. Uh, long-term care, um, the Nigeria sales agreement.
I move to approve the Nigeria sales agreement for the purchase of the opera, property table. Am I saying that, Jason?
I don't even know how to say it myself. I just call it the magic table.
The magic table.
Topper tappel. I'm going with topper tappel for the win. Table unauthorized chair to sign on this third documents as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second, motion been made and seconded, any discussion? Not on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yeah.
I vote yes. Lean release.
Right, move to approve a leaner release on reels property filed with Rockland County Registry of D's Book 6279, page 1510, as recommended by the Senior Director of Long-Term Care Services.
Second.
Motion's made and seconded, um, any further discussion?
Matt, Kathy, do we get any discount on the, uh, the recording fees? No.
All right.
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
I will, yes.
Just in jazz.
Very good, so now we're already up to department, and so I'm gonna, I gotta start with Kathy Stacy. Good afternoon, Kath.
Good afternoon. Um, not too much to report, I will tell you, we did have a big, a, a big transaction the other day, cash in Newcastle for $4.8 million, a house. I'm telling you, I don't know where these people get their money. But other than that, it's business as usual, and Monday I have my subcommittee meeting at 10:00 AM, so I'm looking forward to that. And, um, other than that, that's pretty much all I have to report. Thank you.
Kathy, Pat Conway. Good afternoon. Good to see you.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, can you guys hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Um, things are going good, we're busy as usual, nothing really new to report. Have my subcommittee meeting, uh, tomorrow after the third quarter budget review. So we'll get that, and hopefully, and it'll, I'll go out, but that's really it, nothing really to report.
Okay. Thank you very much, Pat. Yes, go ahead.
I just, I know, Pat, you're so busy running the office, but, um, uh, with one of the police departments, there was a case that, you know, was, was challenging, and I know you took the time to speak with one of the detectives, and it was very meaningful, and I wanna say thank you for your efforts and, you know, really pursuing ju, like, the goal here is justice, right? In the county attorney's office, and your time, you know, managing is, and a lot of caseload, but taking that extra time was impactful in, uh, this scenario, and so thank you for those, those things that you do that don't really get reported at these meetings, or they're kind of off the record, but thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Coyle.
Jason Smith. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh, just reporting on a few things here. We are scheduling for another mobile clinic, uh, for our residents, and for those that are over the age of 65 or have autoimmune, um, compromises. That's on May 23rd at 9:00 AM, May 25th at 9:00, and again, May 26th, they'll be on site. So that is open for our residents and staff. Um, as Commissioner Coyle mentioned, um, Lilac View Senior Living Community in Rochester, uh, had a flood, a major water main broke at 2:00 AM in the morning, causing the facility to evacuate. Um, and I just wanna say thank you so much for allowing, um, the purchase of the, uh, bus, because that was the modes of transportation to pick those residents up. Uh, with that being said, current census in our assisted living is at 48 out of capacity of 49. Um, so those residents will be with us for a period of time, uh, so we look forward to serving those, um, residents from Stratford County. In addition to that, census over in the nursing home is 135, that, out of 202, we have 67 beds available, that's the highest census we have had, um, since I've been here, so, um, we continue to admit, um, so very happy. Um, in addition to that, Friend Services Alliance will be on site, uh, to provide, um, one of their compliance reviews in preparation for our survey window. Uh, this is just a part of our compliance program, the risk management program, so we welcome them. And that will just, uh, open us up to improve, um, any processes that we need to prior to the mock survey, and thus our normal survey. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Good Sheriff Miseos, hi Sheriff Miseos, and Catherine Mann.
Good, good afternoon. Um, nothing really to report this week, uh, we did have dispatch interviews, we're getting a lot of applications in, a lot of qualified applications. I think we have one that is previously worked at another dispatch center, so it, it's looking pretty good. I mean, the problem that we have when it comes to dispatches, and we only have two dispatchers supervisors that can train, but you know what? We, it, it's a good pool of candidate, candidates that come in. Uh, Monday, we have a subcommittee, uh, at nine o'clock, um, we're hoping that goes well, which it should, and otherwise than that, we continue to be busy, and, uh, thank you.
Thank you. Jason Henry?
Good afternoon, everybody. Um, so, thank you, uh, Commissioner Chair Chell coming on today for a subcommittee, uh, meeting. They unanimously voted our budget forward, and I understand it's most amount of people in the sub-budget committee that's shown up so far. That went well. Um, next week is officer appreciation along with nurse appreciation week, so we have a lot of things scheduled and planned for next week. It's exciting. The opioid grant reimbursement, uh, just came open today, so, um, working with Chuck, I sent it over to him to work with the grant writer, uh, reference that. The next, um, opioid abatement committee meeting is on Monday. And next week, we have several staff members and other people throughout the state taking, uh, trauma-informed training through SAMSA, which is the grant that Jim Warden, uh, James Warden wrote with the state and won, uh, so it's a no-cost tool, it's through the Association of Counties, but we do the bulk of the work, but a lot of people go into it, so that should be very helpful, and to be able to teach staff on trauma-informed. Next, we have one over here, thank you.
Did you bring back any Jameson?
I actually did, a couple bottles.
Whoopie-oo, good to you, okay. Robin, Bernie.
Hello. Not a whole lot to report for me, we did have our subcommittee meeting this week, which I think went well. Um, so that was, that was a nice thing to be completed. You've all seen the new email for the cybersecurity training, we're in phase two of that, so everybody's gotten that little email, uh, to complete, a little shorter this time, a little bit different, so just try to mix it up every, every border, that's pretty much it.
I just wanna report that I finished my, um, training finally.
Good, thank you.
So thank you for resetting my password, because I couldn't figure it out. But thank you. All right, Jude Gates?
Good afternoon. Oswald in Facilities. I have, um, just a couple of report items. Our Subcommittee for Long Range Planning also met, Commissioner Chair Chell was there, it went very well, they were, um, knowledgeable, they had really good questions, and, um, it was an enjoyable process. Engineering and Maintenance meets tomorrow at 10:30, all executive committee review. So I'm looking forward to that as well, and that'll be all three of them.
Wow.
Yeah. Um, we had a minor water main break last week on the south side of North Road, it affected only engineering and maintenance, motor services in Browns, but our own staff took care of it, we had our Jimmy Dills on the backhoe, our, our two guys, water wastewater chiefs and our foreman, and they cut out the pavement, they dug down, they patched the pipe, they disinfected everything, and the only thing we're gonna need outside help with is paving. I'm really pleased they pulled together very nicely as a team in, um, doing the work in houses, A, more efficient, less expensive, and you know you get a good job because, you know, there's an ownership there. I was really pleased that they did such a good job, and they felt really good about it afterwards. Um, you might recall several months ago, we had two fan coils up in Infernal Two that froze over a bad weekend. Um, they came in this week to replace them, one of them, the replacement is complete. The second one, um, the main board was bad. This is, um, becoming a bit of a theme now, trying to, um, equipment that has boards replaced, because a lot of this equipment was constructed, put together during COVID, at, you know, at or near the beginning of COVID, and um, some of the work is sketchy at best, so, um, one for two, and we're gonna wait for the replacement board on that other one, but it's becoming a bit of a theme where a piece of brand-new equipment is being installed, and there's a component that's not, um, working appropriately, so we're keeping an eye on it. where a piece of brand-new equipment is being installed and there's a component that's not, um, working appropriately, so we're keeping an eye on that. Um, we've been working on the suicide prevention cells down at Corrections. The doors were, saw those were replaced this week. And, um, they're going to come in next week to install the locks. We've been cutting out bunks. The cameras were installed, so we're trying to get everything together for Corrections to be able to use those staff, those cells. And then finally, um, with regard to the new building, New Hampshire DOT is reviewing our driveway permit. We do have to have a permit to make a cut, a driveway cut, you know, where we would be going up to the new building across from the jail driveway. It's a state highway, so we're dealing with New Hampshire DOT District Six. And, um, they, they have a lot of questions that we, they've ordered a traffic study to be conducted. Um, and so on and so forth. They're looking at line of sight, potential crosswalks, traffic lights, et cetera. None of it's really, um, I wouldn't say it's unexpected, but we did notify DOT Six last year in June that we were, you know, engaging in the project and did they need anything except for preliminary information and up until about three weeks ago, there were no questions whatsoever. Now there's loads of questions.
Huh.
So, um, well, you know, we'll be addressing them going forward. I think it's just like everything else.
Yeah.
Fishing game is all set, AOT is all set, wetlands is wrapping up, so we're, we're getting there for sure.
Yeah. And I looked at the starting time, it was basically June third.
Yep.
That's when we're gonna get.
Right around the corner.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, Julie.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon. I'm good, thank you. Um, we have been working on getting open enrollment going. Um, there's not a lot of changes, but we still have to update all the, you know, the system for the right years and all that business, so we're doing that. We're working on the, um, UKG project and, um, lots of recruiting action from Autumn. And other than that, it's just regular HR stuff.
Okay, we're good. Chuck Nicholson, I know you have nothing to share, but.
I'm not doing anything, I am.
Now, this reminder, um, tomorrow morning is the third quarter budget review.
Yeah.
Um, I'm guessing that there might be some discussion on how the subcommittee meetings are going as well. Those are our seven new members of the executive committee.
On here.
Um, there's already been five subcommittee meetings so far. They've all gone well. No changes at all to the commissioner's proposed budget amounts. Uh, they all seem supportive of, uh, of the budget, you know, not only the departments, but the overall commissioner's budget, so that's good. Um, let's see, I'll be working with Cheryl as far as preparing like the first draft of the delegation resolutions. Um, so that first draft to be brought up at, on May twenty-sixth, as far as when the subcommittee chairs, where all members of the executive committee
Yeah.
present their department's budgets to the overall executive committee. Uh, so I'll be the, on the next bigger, uh, budget dates. And that's another Friday and now most likely be nine thirty as well in Hilton. Um, let's see, we've had some conferences going on, so Katie and Lane are at the, um, New Hampshire Government Finance Officers Association, one, we usually try to send two, if not three individuals to that training because it's great accounting-focused training, um, for our folks. Um, I'll, I myself be going to that Tyler Connect and Mina's conference early part next week, so unfortunately that means I will miss out on the four subcommittees that are, uh, taking place on Monday. I, I did tell Cheryl before any scheduling was happening that I'd be out that, that day, but, uh, four got scheduled. So between Jesse and Katie, they'll be, um, at, you know, one or both at each of those meetings. Um, again, just busy with, uh, budgets, grant reporting, the ARPA, uh, fine, went fine. Um, just had one little technical glitch, but still got filed in, in time. Um, we're winding down, continuing to wind down, um, rental assistance.
Yeah.
As you see, the, the amounts for each run get, get a little bit smaller.
Yeah.
Um, we're trying to get for some reason, a cork hasn't worked out exactly how to close off the applications yet from the outside. So we're trying to work with them to officially close that. We think, they think that they finally have solved that issue, so we're hoping to find out today, hopefully they have that loophole closed. Um, it does look like when Senator Heen went and it got the additional, I think it was like nine million of funds from the state program. Um, that part of the money came from that last clawback from the feds, from our own money.
From us?
Yeah. And then they got another five million plus from, uh, other pools of unallocated or, or, you know, other entities and utilize all their funds. So. Um, I don't, I haven't seen any big announcements though, that like the reopening of that beyond Senator Heen's announcement of of the money has come to the, the state program. So, I mean, one thing that people might have seen too is that the deadline for so the heating or electrical assistance went past that the cap programs are doing.
Yeah.
So hopefully a fair amount of those monies were spent down, but I don't know, that's a.
Very minimal, they said, so they just didn't advertise it out that well.
There was like initial announcements when it first came out.
Yeah.
But, um, like Jason said, working on that, um, opioid abatement trust fund, uh, grant, um, we thought that it wouldn't be until like Monday or Tuesday that the new RGA, the new grant application now sort of come out, but it came out just now. So that's five million dollars to be divvied up across the ten counties. We don't know if it means like five hundred thousand even, this was for historical costs. So basically the last three years. Obviously for each of ten counties, if they do the proper calculations, they'll be over five hundred thousand dollars each, so it'll be interesting to see if can we get that five million increase, probably not this round, I'm guessing, but will it be divvied up by an even five hundred thousand each or will be divvied up by, you know, like if we, if we add up all the costs that we put together. Um, you know, because I can stop at five hundred thousand, forget, add up everything for the last three years. And if our share of the grand total of the cost ends up being like, say, uh, fifteen percent, are we going to get fifteen percent of the five million, so just, you know, one tenth? So that's yet to be seen. I mean, it just opened. We're hoping to get ahead of things and give a draft set of numbers to the committee, the state committees, so you could see that five million is not a true realistic representation at all for the costs that have been to the counties for the last three years of running their own M A T programs and lay expenses. So we'll, we'll see where that goes. Uh, but yes, that process is kicking off right now. I think it'll Jason, I know you saw for an application, we know Bob's guessing it's probably not a very lengthy application window to submit.
It's a little reduced in the last one. They, they consolidated a little bit. Um, so it should take, and we have a lot of stuff from last time, so I don't think it'll take that long. But as Chuck said, I believe there's another commissioner going on Monday to the, to the meeting. Um, Mr. McGlars, um, to try and make a pitch to see if we can put more money, which I'm going as well too. I'm supposed to get all these stats. I don't know if we can up to five million right now because that was, was voted on, but we'll see. Um, but at least we're going to make the pitch for it because one county already put their stuff together. It's a very smaller county and it's already over two million dollars from a small county, so we're maybe well over the five million dollar threshold. And just so you know, the five million dollars was just thrown out there as, put something so we could get the grant open. That's all it was. There was no rhyme or reason. It was just put out there because they want to start spending the money, so maybe there's an opportunity to raise that a little more.
Well, I, I read an article in today's Union Leader that, uh, the executive committee at state level awarded three counties money. Uh, opioid money. That's not the same pool of money we're, we're talking about, is it?
Yes. So the, the, finally, that's why this grant came open today because I finally went through for governor council from that grant about a year ago, that we, that we, everyone through. They finally went to governor council and they finally approved them and the contracts are finally going out to, uh, that was a six million dollar pool. Um, that was money that was put out and some of the counties did win some money out of that. Um, so that's why this one came open. So as that one was approved, this one came open. So it is out of that, uh, that fund.
All right. And, and my last thing, unfortunately, I do have to mention that one of the individuals in my office did give their resignation notice, unfortunately, so just when we were fully staffed, not legally fully staffed, so.
Oh, boy.
Um, yeah, it's, yeah, so Nick Salima will be leading us for the city of Concord. So it's a more of an expanded position. Surprised they use Mina's too, so he's got value with that. Um, and, and obviously it's, it's, it's more my, so again, uh, we in government, we're competing with same some degree same pool of people, so.
And you know what? I've always said that people can tell themselves. I'm not going to begrudge that, you know, we'll, we'll find something else.
I mean, it's nice that, you know, some of our openings that we had had in prior years is because they're promoted within the county to a different position, sign, you know, obvi- obviously signs have been different departed, yeah. Yeah, so it's still good for them and actually leave the county in those cases. Uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, Leila. Got anything to report for us?
Um, just been really busy. Um, thankfully it's been quiet for the last week. Quieter. Um, so I have been able to, uh, to work on my to-do list. Um, I did want to ask you guys, I know I sent you an email about the meet and greet.
Oh, yeah.
Um, are you guys able to do that after the meeting?
Thursday?
It is a Thursday.
Okay, yeah.
After Primex, after the Primex conference.
Okay.
Okay.
And I, I think we talked about doing that meeting as just, uh, payroll only.
And it's an AP.
Or AP run, do we? Is that an AP?
It's an AP.
True, yes.
Then yes.
Yeah, it'll just be AP. Yeah, so just doing an AP run as opposed to a full meeting just because of the nature with, are you guys?
I'm good with that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. And I'll make sure to change that in the calendar on the website.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anything else?
That's, that's all.
All right.
Thank you.
Now with, uh, say. Do business, all business. We don't have any do business. Mr. Gado?
So I've been looking at the contracts, uh, that we have signed and looking for a legal review on the contracts for the Harvey construction. Uh, and I, I saw a review that was done by an attorney in Concord and Primex on the original contract that was sent up. Uh, there's been no legal review done on the guaranteed maximum price amendment. Um, I've asked, nobody's given me any information on that. I believe it has been overlooked at the moment and I would like to suggest that this should go for legal review. Uh, just because it's the most important document in our contract. It has everything to do with the amount of money that we've agreed uh, to spend and I don't particularly think that there's a problem. The problem is only that our normal procedure of legal counsel looking at contracts like this has not happened.
And so I would, yeah, I mean, I, if, if it would make you feel more comfortable, it's not a contract, it's an addenda, it's an exhibit to the contract.
It's a method. Yeah.
Yeah. Exhibit. So to the extent that a having reviewed it, I didn't see any issues whatsoever and I, um, given that the whole contract was reviewed with Primex with, you know, in such, uh, detail back in, and this is, we're talking back in twenty-one or twenty-two at this point, um, so. Um, and with what we're talking about with this is G M P, the number, which is really not a legal review. Um, but a review of our, you know, our palette for the maximum price. So, um, to the extent I have no concern, but if it would alleviate your concern to um, have, get a, get further review, because I won't say, then I support that. I don't know.
I, I, when I sort of echo your, your statements there, um, the parts that I signed off mostly, there was one page I signed off, yes. Mostly the, the other signature of it or initials were basically the change, when we had the change of price was a difference of price and I, they had crossed that off and I just initial, they initial. Um, this is not anything in, in my world of real estate that's any different than a lot of contracts and whatnot, but, um, but I will, you know, I, I get the commissioner Gado, um, wants to just double check and I, you know, I have no problem if he wants to have that with that, that's fine. Most of it's numbers and stock dates and whatnot. Um, and, uh, so I have no problem with doing that. Now, what are we going to do? Primax, you mean?
Um, there was another firm.
Because Primax is free.
I'm sorry.
And it's Fransmeyer.
Yeah, Fransmeyer, yeah, Fransmeyer.
It should go there. They did the original.
They did, yeah.
Yeah, Fransmeyer and, um, Primax, I imagine.
Yeah, Primax was going to be free, so I have, so whatever, that's not a problem. Uh, and then the other attorney, he's just looking at it and ending himself.
And it should be sure.
It shouldn't be sure, not a lot of money, so if it makes you feel comfortable, I would support that, so.
Okay, so I make a motion that we send the G M P agreement to legal counsel for review and comments.
I'll second.
Okay.
I just want to note, I don't think that there's, I don't think we need to, but, um, again, this is to purely, you know, in support of trying to facilitate your comfort.
And I, and I echo the same comments. I, I don't think we have to. I don't think it's going to be a lot of money. I mean, I'm comfortable with what we have now, but I can certainly understand your side of it and so let's just do that and then that makes you happy, we'll get that done. So all on, on the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
All favor, aye. Okay, so we'll.
Thank you.
Any other, uh, new business? What? Any old business? Okay, about public comment. I don't think there's anybody from the public, is there?
No.
Okay, so there's nobody from the public, but I do call the public comment. Um, and that's it. So we're going to be going to non-public. Julie, you have stuff for us or you don't?
Yeah.
Oh, we're going to do the, the lean.
Yeah.
Right.
And that's the only thing we have? Okay, so we'll take a motion with the non-public.
I move to enter to non-public, turn to ninety-one eight three, section two regarding reputation. So may I assist?
Motion to change.
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we'll be going to non-public, folks. See you later. Have a good afternoon. Okay.
See you at five. We're back in public session, uh, coming out of non-public and I move to seal the non-public minutes indefinitely because it relates to the reputation of an individual and that's the ongoing issue.
Motion made and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion to amend the.
And with that, I move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
And seconded. All of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Very good. Okay, our.